I am calling the December 10th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Education Order per Government Code, Section 54950, Executor and Education Code, Section 35140, Executor at 5:31 PM. Trustee Anderson will participate via teleconference and all votes will be taken via roll call. We will now be adjourning to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters: Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code, Section 54956.9, Subsection D2 with Terry Tao from Tao Rosini APC. Is there anyone present who would like to address any of these items? Seeing as there is none, we will adjourn to closed session at 5:32 PM. All right, we're going to convene to regular session at 6:12 PM, and we have nothing to report out of closed session. And I am going to ask trustee Youngblood to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Will you please stand?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all of our votes tonight are roll call will all be vocalized. So, Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
To be here.
I understand. Mrs. Anderson?
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Youngblood?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
Here.
And I am chair, show all of us present. I need an approval of the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for December 10th, 2024, Board of Education as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Youngblood, I have a second by Mrs. Buck, any comments? All those in favor? Roll call, please, Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye, motion carries five zero. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We provide a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time so we can ensure that we are prepared. Civility policy, Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Churnus for recognition of trustee Sean Youngblood.
All right. Good evening, President Blades, members of the school board, staff and community. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and honor our outgoing trustee and esteemed colleague, Sean Youngblood. Mr. Youngblood was elected to the board in 2020 and served as board president during his first year. Over his four years, he's guided our district through significant endeavors, including navigating the unprecedented challenges of COVID and championing the success of CTE programs. Beyond his contributions to our district, Mr. Youngblood is a dedicated public servant with nearly three decades of experience as a professional firefighter for the city of Downey. His leadership and unwavering commitment to serving others have been evident through his time on the board. In the past year, I've been deeply impressed by his kindness, his passion for what's best for students, and his steadfast dedication to our school community. Mr. Youngblood's efforts have left an indelible mark on our academic and organizational success, benefiting students, staff, families, and the entire PYL community. We're sincerely grateful for his service and dedication to PYL USD and beyond. And as a token of our appreciation, we have a small gesture to present him this evening. So, thank you, trustee Youngblood, for your tireless commitment to making PYL USD a better place. Thank you for putting kids first. Please join me in giving him a well- deserved round of applause. I will now turn it over to the board for any additional comments they'd like to make.
Any comments, anyone?
Thank you, Sean, for your service, appreciate it.
It's been fun getting to know you, and you're on to greener pastures, or well, more humid pastures, right? So, good luck with all that, thank you for your service, sir.
I said a lot last meeting, but it all holds true still. Our Cowboys can let us down again last night, so we will suffer through terrible seasons of Cowboys for yours to come together. I just appreciate you, I appreciate all your service, knowing you professionally, you know, in the field, and also to, you know, here on school board. I've really gotten to know you in all aspects, and so I've appreciated more of who you are. And I wish you and your family the best of luck. Much love to Gia, Andrew's sons, and all your grandkids, too. All right, Sean, do you have anything to say?
Well, I promised myself that I wouldn't cry, but it has, it has been very bittersweet. And as I mentioned before, I have to give credit where credit is due. First of all, I got to give credit to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Without his, without his strength and wisdom, I don't think I could have been at this job, at this post. He obviously had bigger plans than I expected, because this is not on my radar. But I am very happy to be a part of something as amazing as what I've seen over the past four years. I do know that being in this position has been not only one of toil, but also a, just in education. If there are any things, anything in which I could tell parents to do is to get involved in something like this. It truly is an eye-opener. Not only do you see the very best in people, but you can see some things in which we'd need to improve on. I got to work alongside of some pretty amazing educators at all different levels, whether they were teachers, whether they were administrators. I highly advise parents to become more involved in, in this type of forum and in this type of position, because it truly is a, an experience. You start understanding how government works. You start understanding that your elected officials, even though we put them up on places of, you know, extreme importance, pedestals, at the end of the, end of the day, they're still humans with the same feelings and concerns that, that you may have. And it hurts my heart at times to see how many people will try their darndest to tear those, those people down that are really just looking out for your kids. And if at any time you are in one of these positions and you think that it's more about you than it is the kids in which you're trying to serve and the public that you're trying to serve, then maybe you should reevaluate what you're actually doing. So, with that, I also have to thank all, all the board members up here that have, have been very patient with me as I kind of stumbled my way through a lot of this. And also the executive staff that I've asked several things on, just because the, the areas that they work in, it's just not my wheelhouse, so I have to, have to go to them with problems and concerns that I might have. And to the parents that actually reach out and want to have questions answered that is, you know, not, not something in which I normally deal with. So, they were, they were very patient with me as well, so, so thank you for that. I have to also say, my wife being so supportive, she's been battling illness for about four years, so I've had, you know, to contend with a couple of things at home, as well as, you know, some of the job functions in which I do. But for the most part, this has been very encouraging. I love the fact that this community does care and they do voice what they're concerned with. And I guarantee you that the people up here are doing their best to provide that, the safety, the security, the education in what your kids need. All right, so with that, God bless, and thank you again for the accolades.
Sean, or Mr. Youngblood, I just wanted to thank you for your service and for all your commitment.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Okay. We are now in public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have 15 people wishing to speak tonight, so each speaker will have two minutes each. We're going to call you up, and we're going to ask you to repeat your name when you get to the podium. We'll call four speakers at a time. The first speaker, all right, so we have 16, so now we have one and a half minutes each. Now we have 17, so we definitely have one and a half minute each. All right, so our first speaker will be Tim Murray, Sue Sawyer, Jenny Bremer, and Kathy Ballinger.
Good evening. First off, I'm an Eagles fan, so go Birds. I'm also an Area 1 voter, so Sean, we don't always agree, but thank you for helping to get the lights at Eldorado. And thank you for your service. The lights at Eldorado have been a long time coming. Corruption occurs when funds intended for public projects are intentionally misdirected in order to maximize the benefits of private interests. This is a U.S. history standard and will be on my final exam. It is known as a graft. This community is being taken advantage of by current members of the school board. Not long ago, we were told that USI and OCSCS were going to be innovative schools that would provide PYL students with opportunities that traditional schools did not provide them. We were told these programs would help to increase enrollment. I was even asked by some of you to support USI. Today, you're asking the community to support having these schools and innovative programs become independent charters, no longer affiliated with PYL, run by an independent board. Will all PYL students still have access to USI? That's what you promised. You've even added this extra board meeting tonight, and you're moving forward without listening to all your constituents. You must have forgotten that earlier this year, there was a petition signed by over 1,200 members of this community against approving an independent charter.
Thank you, Tim.
Leadership Isaak. A leader's role is to model how to communicate respectfully, handle conflict, and provide constructive feedback to help others learn from it. You purposely did not put the reprimand from last October in my personnel file because I would have been able to file a grievance. It was meant to cause intimidation. No phone call, no conversation, no letter. You purposely left out everyone in the chain of command, director, principal, assistant principal, which it went straight to me, shame on you. Good leaders, don't do that. Dressing fly doesn't make you competent. For the involuntary transfer, you didn't even have the temerity or integrity to give me a phone call, send a letter, or try to get ahold of me during the summer. If this was planned and something you all were proud of, you would have announced it. You would have put it on Alex's Monday message. It was done vindictively. Two days before I was involuntarily transferred, the administration spent $100,000 for live streaming at Esperanza, and two days after, you spent another $100,000 on that same project. Good leaders don't waste $200,000 if they're not going to have a program back. It indicates to me that it was not planned out. At the end of the day, good leadership is about more than just managing outcomes. It's about fostering a culture of respect, communication, and understanding. I hope this serves as a reminder that modeling the right behavior starts with how we interact with one another, especially when addressing mistakes or concerns. You need to do better. You have a lot to learn.
Good evening, I'm Jenny Bremer. In October, at our, at our board meeting, Carrie announced that she had acquired 2,400 double doses of Narcan to distribute in our schools. It's now December. As a teacher, have heard nothing about this. We need it to be in our classrooms. I've sent emails, and Ms. Blades and I have gone back for the email, and I appreciate your interest. And we talked about what can be done, and what can be done, what needs to be done. This is really simple. It takes a 13-minute video to train someone on how to use this, how to recognize what an overdose looks like. Keeping this in a cupboard is like keeping fire extinguishers in a cupboard. It's not okay. I see all this circus, I see all of this political wrangling and all of this nonsense. We need to remember, number one, goal, job of everybody here is keeping kids safe. Please, we need those, Narcan in every red emergency backpack in every classroom, and we need it yesterday. Please, look at kids' safety, actually put them first above all this other nonsense. Please, before a kid gets hurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballinger Opolo. My family started our DLA journey in 2016. We made the difficult choice of leaving Van Buren, which we loved, to give our children the amazing opportunity to be biliterate. Our first meeting as a community was the summer before kindergarten. At that meeting, there was a high school teacher from Corona High School. He shared that he taught history and government in Spanish, and how they just celebrated the graduation of their first high school DLA students. Now, riddle me this. If there wasn't a plan to have the program go through high school here at PYL, why was that teacher there telling us about his high school program and the DLA graduates? A promise was made to the DLA families that our students would be provided with a program K through 12, not K through 8. We have felt like an unwanted exotic pet, people have heard me say that over and over again, that the district couldn't get rid of ever since we lost our original directors. Recently, attention has been shown, but only on the front end of the program. What about our pioneers? What about the kids that the program was built on their backs? Please don't abandon them now. I had the chance to meet with Dr. Churnus yesterday. Believe it or not, nine years, he is the first administrator to ever ask for our community's input and feedback, and I appreciate that so much. He has expressed his commitment to making sure that there's a DLA high school program. And I'm here tonight to ask for your support, too.
Thank you.
I have copies of a petition signed with, by over 200 families. Am I allowed to give you guys these?
Yes. All right, as she's passing that out, we'll have Shanny Murray, David Peterson, Josh Schroder, and Darcy Garcia.
How does making the OC School of Computer Science an independent charter and taking USI with it benefit PYL USD, the district you're supposed to represent? How can giving away a school be the best interest for our local students? This rushed change to a brand-new district-run charter on the heels of an election makes it look like you have something to hide. I don't know what's going on behind closed doors, but I know this move is not what's best for our PYL community. If you prioritized our needs, you wouldn't vote to take district resources away or to shield the USI budget from public accountability. I can't stop you from voting against PYL's best interests, but I will keep standing up for our community. More than 10,000 people voted for Tricia Quintero, and we look forward to having an educator, someone who actually cares for and engages with students on a daily basis, as our Area 1 representative moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanny.
Greetings, good to be back. Dave Peterson, pastor in the area in North Orange County, 25 years, 15 years, special education, retired now. Sent a letter to each of the board members, giving my perspective on educational alternative models, charter schools, pilot schools, that type of thing. I don't know, I may be the only person in the building that's actually been an employee in a charter school environment, or I was in a pilot school environment in LAUSD, so hope to share a little bit of that, that model and concepts with it. Okay, I had three points in the letter. The first one is that alternative models are very helpful in creating innovative platforms for understanding how to do education in more innovative ways. So, I'm excited about what that can provide for the future. Secondly, it benefits us to go from models that already exist. The two largest school districts in the country are LAUSD and New York. Those are the two places the district should be looking to for some of those templates and ideas to use for modification. And finally, I provide an example of a charter school renewal, charter of middle school, and it's 280 pages, which is about half of that. And the board's current input is about 89, well, 49 pages, so there's a lot more to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Josh Schroder?
You, Josh Schroder.
Schroder.
Sorry, it's fine. The OCSCS material revision was so rushed that at last month's meeting, Dr. Fisher admitted to cranking it out during a marathon 100-hour work week, joked about how it was full of typos, and suggested the board just feed it to ChatGPT to summarize instead of trying to read it, her words. Trustee Frazier, we need you to put on your CPA hat here and really look at the material revision. Your clients are the children of this district and the taxpayers who voted for you. Tonight's staff report has already found these flaws. It doesn't contain the financial information and budget projections necessary to operate a school. It doesn't define how special education and IEP students would be supported. There's no school safety plan, and the agreement on district oversight isn't even written yet. The CPA's code of ethics call on you to act with objectivity, integrity, and give your decisions due care. I ask that you apply that same standard to the material revision. Would you stake your professional reputation on a document like this? Would you risk your political future on it? Last month, trustee Blades said that requiring a supermajority to dismiss Dr. Churnus was necessary to stop what happened at Orange Unified from happening here. I spoke with someone involved in the OUSD recall. When they went door-to-door explaining the problems with the board, it wasn't the firing of the superintendent that swayed voters most. You know what did? The facts about the trustees, financial mismanagements of district funds, spending millions on an unnecessary sports facility and letting a charter mortgage off a district-owned junior high. Sound familiar? Financial mismanagement, that's what cost them their seats. So, I ask you all again, do you want to stake your political futures on a plan this rushed and this fly? Thank you.
Darcy Garcia? My name is Darcy, I'm a parent of a student, and I reject converting the school to an independent charter. When Dr. Fisher presented her vision for OCSCS last year, she sold us on a great opportunity and appeared organized and well, as well as passionate. It's why we signed on. Unfortunately, organization and well-thought-out plans aren't what we're currently receiving. My child comes home with stories of unruly classmates disrupting the classroom and of teachers unable to curb unacceptable behavior. My child believes it's partly due to larger class sizes than what she experienced in fifth grade. When my child speaks to old classmates about curriculum, it appears OCSCS is running behind our homeschool. The impression I'm getting here is that OCSCS bit off more than it could chew, and is scrambling to fix the problems it didn't properly plan for. I feel my child is getting a subpar education compared to our homeschool and is falling behind. While I appreciate the out-of-box thinking for expanding curriculum opportunities in our district, I don't support doing it at the expense of our children's base educational requirements. Moreover, when we resold on this school, as well as the sports institute, it was to increase our district's attendance. By turning these schools into full charters, aren't we going against the original intent? This feels like a broken promise from both Dr. Fisher and this board when we were told this school would remain under the control of the district. I urge you to reconsider this approach, take the necessary time to plan thoroughly, and prioritize our children's best interests. Rushing these initiatives without proper preparation is detrimental to our children's education.
Priya Shaw, Matt Wilkerson, Linda Cohn, and Leslie Alexander. Priya Shaw?
I listened carefully to Dr. Fisher's presentation last month. The OCSCS charter seems like it has great potential, but there's no convincing argument to revise its material status into an independent charter. Multiple reasons to not revise the charter do exist, however. One, students who go to that charter will not be counted towards the district's ADA. Two, it continues to use district resources for transportation, nutrition services, professional development, staff services, et cetera, costing the district money. And there's a lack of accountability. The district board will lose oversight, and unfortunately, we can't count on the county board under Dr. Stephen Bean to produce that accountability. There is no reason to revise the OCSCS charter unless it's a way to hide something, and I can't help but thinking bringing USI into it is a way to do that. So, just a reminder that besides trustee Youngblood, you'll all be here next week and next year and the few years after that. And unlike this situation with the independent charter, you will be held accountable. Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Wilkerson, parent of two in the district. I would like the vote to not happen tonight on the OCSCS. It should be stated on the record that Leander Blade's son is an employee of the OCSCS. And according to Ed. Code 35107, a board member shall abstain from voting on personal matters that uniquely affect his or her relatives. There is no ambiguity in this code. Ms. Blades should recuse herself from this vote. Ed. Code 47605 states that the charter school shall provide operational budget cash flow projections for the rest of your operations. That has not been provided. You're potentially entering into an agreement without any of that in place, and this memorandum of understanding is poorly worded and ambiguous. Ed. Code 47605 also requires comprehensive descriptions of the 15 required elements. The material revision does not. The superintendent used to care about the number of students enrolled in the district and touted this a mere month ago. Now, we don't care. We're letting 838 students leave the district and take their millions in state funding with them. We're also handing the facilities of the USI and the OCSS off to Beth Fisher, who doesn't know how many teachers she has working for her. And finally, Ed. Code requires a 15-day notice for public response to staff recommendations for this. You posted this on the 3rd. This vote is illegal. There is no good reason to vote on this charter this evening. It's rushed, it benefits no one, and it will be subject to lawsuits and a revote once the new board is seated. You're wasting time and money.
Linda Cohn? Linda?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear my name.
No problem.
Mr. Youngblood, we will miss you. Thank you for your good work. God bless you. I'd like to thank the board and the administration for the long overdue Eldorado lights, the walls at Travis, and finally, the Valencia cafeteria upgrades. But I'd like to thank you even more for the innovation and choice as exemplified in the Orange County School of Computer Science. of Computer Science. I think we all know why the action that you're taking tonight is necessary. We are led to believe that if this charter remains within the district, it will no longer cease to exist. So I am hopeful that the action that you will take will allow this charter a chance to either succeed or fail. I can tell you, if the staff is any indication of what hard work and innovation will and can do, this charter will succeed. And I think that's why there are people in this room who want to stop it. They do not want it to succeed. All I can say is, to Dr. Fisher and her staff, may God bless your efforts. You will succeed.
Thank you. Leslie?
My name is Leslie Alexander. I am a retired PYL teacher, the parent of two PYL grads, and a homeowner in Area One. I would also like to request that the vote for the charter school not move forward tonight. Why the rush? Mrs. Buck asked Dr. Fisher this very question at the November board meeting, a question that Dr. Fisher deflected and never actually answered. Our students deserve programs that are the result of thoughtful consideration, research, and are implemented with purpose. Instead, we have programs that are poorly planned and poorly executed, a hallmark of this superintendent. For example, the original site for USI on Casteloma, a vacant building rendered unusable after a costly renovation, a shameful reminder of wasteful spending, a failed superintendent, and the failed majority board who enabled him. Now, they want to give away USI in the charter school, the very assets into which this district has poured millions of public dollars. They have rushed this charter, misled this community regarding the charter, and now they will fail our students in this community by releasing those assets. It reveals a recklessness and a carelessness with our district's assets, our public funds, and the future of our students.
All right, so I'll call the last five. Don Miller, Lynda Mannion, Steve Reynolds, John Quackenbush, and Mark Fury.
Okay, Don Miller. One year ago, as we've all been hearing, we created a charter school, quickly, without transparency. Almost a year ago, we created the Sports Program Institute, quickly, with questions not answered. And just a mere three weeks ago, this proposal to actually take our heavily-funded charter school now and turn it into an independent charter without our control is being proposed. And it was Ms. Anderson who had stated that she needed more information, recommended a study session, which is very common for something like this. This is, and it was already being put on for today to be voted on. This is a direct violation of Board Policy 9251, Ethics of School Board Members, which states sufficient time, thought, and study to propose actions is to be devoted so to be able to base decisions upon all available facts and vote in accordance with honest convictions unswayed by partisan bias of any kind. So what are the benefits to doing this? Only one benefit would be if we were having a problem with our budget, that we had to get rid of this school. There are over six reasons not to. But here's what I want everyone to understand. We've done all this, and then our own board president, Leandra Blades, said in an article in The Register that this has been under consideration for some time. So there it is, folks. This has been the plan of Alex Chernus and Leandra Blades with the inclusion of Frazier and Youngblood. And here is all the board policies that you have been violating.
Thank you.
And you will get a copy of that.
Thank you.
Lynda Mannion, Apple President. Our community has recently concluded a very difficult election, in which the public was given lots of information and heard very different visions for our school district. The result of this democratic process was that the public convincingly chose a different direction than that of the current board majority. The greatest challenge in a democracy is not for newly-elected officials to take their seats. It is for those who do not win elections to accept the results and allow the will of the voters to be implemented. Nothing hurts democracy more than those that lost an election taking actions after the election results to try and stop the will of the voting majority. These actions are anti-democratic, anti-community, and most importantly, anti-parents and the children they send to our quality schools.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Steve Reynolds. I'm calling about, talking about something completely different than that. I have become aware of a possibility of saving the district over $6 million by adopting a health overlay that takes advantage of tax laws and results in this substantial savings. What's this based on? The county of Miami-Dade, seventh-largest county in the United States, on November 6th adopted this same plan, projects they will save in excess of $50 million for their 26,000 employees. I think it's worth looking at. That's why I gave you each a handout with enough information for you to see the resolution that the Miami-Dade Board of Supervisors adopted, and we can dig into it to a deeper offline with staff. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Good evening. John Quackenbush, Area One voter. So, Sean, thank you for your service. Appreciate that, and may God bless you, your wife, and your family in your new endeavors. To repeat what Lynda was saying, the will of the people spoke on the 5th of November. They voted in a new trustee, and a new board should be provided the time to consider this and the respect that this board has received as well. Sean, I do ask you tonight to vote no on this charter MOU. At the very least, I ask that you abstain from it and allow the new trustee to learn about it and make an informed vote with the new board on it. Couple of things. If it's true that we have to do this, or this is going to fail, maybe we need to think about turning it into an academy. I hear a lot of good things about the stuff that's going on, so maybe we don't want to lose the curriculum, but bring it back to that. On that note, with the curriculum, I know we spent thousands of dollars on new curriculum for this. How are we going to get that back? Are we losing all of that money? How are we, all the funds and everything spent, the hours of wages spent by our staff working on this? How are we getting that back? Fortunately, I haven't read the MOU, so hopefully that stuff's in there, or you can let me know at another time and really consider this. And I please ask that we allow the next board to make the informed decision on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Fury? Mark?
I publicly want to thank you, Sean. I know how hard you've worked, and good luck to you in your move to Texas. But I have a question, and hopefully you can answer it. I've been out with a lot of people over the last several months, and I have a tough time answering a couple of questions, and I just want to verify some facts. Is it true that the district has paid for the president of the teachers' union 100% of her salary for the last 10 or so years? Is that true? Yes. So, what's happening is, you've got money going in, paid by the district, being funneled into the teachers' union, that goes and spends some of that money out for campaigns, underfunding the liberal people running for the board, and we're talking about democracy, okay? And saying, save our schools. Save our schools means totally different things, depending on what your position is. Save our schools to people who voted the wrong way because they were misled by the signs. They wanted to vote conservative, and they ended up voting liberal. And so, I know I'm in a minority, but I totally think it's a conflict of interest for you guys to have paid the salary of the president of the teachers' union who's come up here and talking about democracy.
All right, thank you. Turn it over to you.
Okay, we have on our agenda item...
Not yet.
Can I introduce the item first and then go ahead?
That's what we're going to do, yes.
Okay, so item 12.1, and then 12.2. So 12.1 is the material revision submitted to the school board by the OCSCS. Some key talking points, you obviously have the report. We looked at the 15 elements, staff evaluated those, and built an MOU based on those. Some key talking points here. First of all, the MOU contains a 3%, which is the maximum the district can charge the charter school, a 3% oversight and facility use fee. So that's about $240,000 a year. So to those that are saying, we're giving the facility away, that's absolutely not true. Additionally, in the MOU, we will be able to, we will be charging any costs associated with payroll, business functions for the site on top of the 3%. So to process their employees, transportation, those sort of items will be charged, the costs will be charged to the charter school. This MOU, well, the petition itself, if approved, would provide, as indicated by the board before, the ability to, for the charter school to access more funding. So, for example, things like the charter school startup grant, they weren't able to receive. In this case, they would. As far as enrollment goes, these students would still, if we're getting kids coming into the charter school, it's good for our district, it's good for enrollment, because those kids would be matriculating to primarily Esperanza, but obviously, any pathway they choose, including the DLA program that's at the charter, we're building out, as a parent mentioned, we're building a DLA program continuation at Esperanza for these kids starting next year. And lastly, I would say that I've been to this school, and it's amazing, but they've had to go through extra additional hoops to get things like books, materials, things that other schools simply get approved. Every item for their school is always pulled, discussed, sometimes voted down. And when you go to the campus, you see these teachers who are all here tonight, and you see what's going on with the kids, and it's absolutely incredible. And the fact that they were able to put an innovative program like this together in such short amount of time is amazing. And so, the district is not giving away the program, they're not giving away the school, they're renting a facility, the charter agreement is for a limited time. I believe it expires in '29 from what was approved last year. It's a five-year charter. So, some of that misinformation out in the community is unfortunate, but it's clearly not the case. As far as USI, the MOU continues to serve high school students through USI district-wide. So those students would still enroll in Parkview, just as they are now, and still attend any of our schools. But grades 3 through 8 could dual-enroll through OCS and attend USI. It's on their facility, and they can do a lot more with the site in dual-enrolling kids and getting kids involved. So it would not impact the high school USI program. We would continue to offer the same contracts we have with USI with our partners for special needs students, before-and-after-school classes. So district-wide, students can still access the facility. And we're actually looking at more and more ways this summer to get more of our high school athletes in there, because it's such a great opportunity for our kids. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to change that. So staff would only recommend approving this revision with the maximum 3% charge, with the ability to continue to take on USI High School. And again, the recommendation is to only approve the material revision. If you would also approve the MOU, that protects the district and generates revenue for us that they would then have to build out of their expenses.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone action for a meeting after 12/21/24. Excuse me. Because the board failed to post the staff findings and recommendations with the, at least 15 days prior to the approval or denial of this charter per statutory requirements in Ed Code, and I have a copy highlighted for every one of you. It states, "The governing board of the school district shall publish all staff recommendations, including the recommended findings, and if applicable, the certification from the county superintendent of schools prepared pursuant to paragraph 8 of subdivision C regarding the petition at least 15 days before the public hearing at which the governing board of school district either grant or deny the charter."
But this isn't the public hearing.
This is action item 1. I'm moving that we postpone action.
Okay.
Waiting for a second.
That's not a, this isn't a public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's go for a vote. Roll call, please, Mrs. Buck.
No.
Mrs. Anderson.
So we're not even going to discuss any of this?
We're not having a discussion about this?
Oh, yeah, we can discuss.
So if we do this, we violate Ed Code. We're required to have this posted 15 days prior.
This isn't a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. The public hearing was at the last board meeting. This is not a public hearing.
Before we grant or deny the charter, we're supposed to have staff recommendations. Before a public hearing, we're getting the actual petition. We have no ability to have staff recommendations before we get the petition submitted to us. So we are actually violating Ed Code now. We're not allowed to vote on this today. We have to wait the 15 days. So the earliest we can vote on this is 12/21/24. And it has to be at a regular meeting, so it's going to have to be bumped to January, as well as the MOU. And I was at CSBA, and I discussed this with a number of people there who also agreed with this.
There's lots of, this is definitely legal that...
So this was recommended by...
The findings have to be posted 15 days. They were posted on Friday. That's only four days. We have 90 days to review a charter. We've had 32 days. This is very rushed, and if we go ahead and take a vote to approve these findings, all we're going to do is have to bring it back to fix it. This needs to, we need to postpone this until we have followed the law legally.
If you do a little search in the PYL website, and you search staff recommendations and finding, you'll see all of those for Orange County School of Computer Science from November of last year, January of this year, and CRLA. All of those, we've had to do the same statutory 15-day requirement. This one, we did not, so we cannot vote today.
But the character of this, so but the character of this is a revision because the charter's already approved?
It's the same for revision or annu.
That part's not in here. Where's that?
That's what it says in both. This is valid. Marilyn, what?
The material revisions has the same dates and timeframe as an original petition. It's very clear in Ed Code.
Well, it doesn't say revisions on this paper.
So this, the MOU was prepared by council. We weren't advised of that timeline. If the board wants to vote on this, they can.
We're requesting that we bring it back.
Again, we can send that to council. If the board chooses to vote and approve this, then we will send it to council, and they'll deem whether it's valid or not.
So let's be clear, though, on what we're talking about right now. The motion...
Just a second. Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't, I haven't been able to understand one thing Dr. Chernus has said through this entire meeting, and I've been communicating with Mr. Powell, and we've been trying to fix it. Can he use either Dr. Gates or Mrs. Blades' mic so I can follow along?
Of course.
That would be very helpful to me.
Can you hear me? Marilyn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll use...
Can you hear me?
Everybody else, I've been able to hear fine. I just don't know what's wrong with Dr. Chernus's mic.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me, Ms. Anderson?
Can you hear me, Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Dr. Ternus?
So I believe what I said was, the board may choose to vote on this tonight, as it's agendized. And if it, we will send it to council, and if it's deemed not legal, then they will notify us. But council did prepare the MOU and did not advise us that it would be illegal to take the vote tonight.
I too spoke to council at CSBA last week, and they all agreed that it needs to have a 15-day, the findings need to be posted. So obviously, there's a conflict of what you're saying with what other attorneys are saying, and we need to get clarity before we can move forward on this.
This needs to be approved within 90 days, so bumping it to January won't impact our deadlines to approve or not.
Our council went ahead and said to approve, go ahead.
No, our council prepared the MOU and did not advise us that--
Can we have a little bit of respect, or we're just going to clear the room? This is ridiculous.
Our council prepared the MOU and did not advise us that this would not be appropriately posted. So if the board chooses, because we did agendize this appropriately, if the board chooses to vote on it, we will send it to council. But to supersede a vote with something that I'm seeing for the first time, and, you know, other board members are seeing for the first time, that not necessarily should, should take credence over a properly agendized meeting.
Well, it's ed code, so we should be following it. And by postponing the vote, the vote till January doesn't have any impact on us following ed code or not. So by going forward with this today, we actually are violating ed code.
There's no reason to rush this. We're still within the 90 days. And we need to make sure we're doing this legally and lawfully, so we don't cause undue burden on the district with lawsuits.
If you search PYL, you can see the other ones on there, too. We've had to do this before.
Oh, no, I'm looking at ed code. Yeah.
This is not a public hearing. So that's the question I have, that I'd have for council, is that this is reference to a public hearing?
The public hearing is when we actually get the original document. There's no way to have staff recommendations and findings at that same time, or 15 days prior to getting that.
I understand that.
So this is the 15 days prior to the time we take that action, a vote where the, whether we approve or deny.
I understand that. I'm just saying that this is in reference to a public hearing, which this is not. So that'd be my question for council.
Right, it says right here, public hearing. A public hearing for a charter school is a formal meeting where the public can provide input on a proposed charter and petition. The purpose of the hearing is to allow the community to show their support for the charter and to provide testimony in favor or against it. And this is not a public hearing tonight.
So at what point do you do the staff recommendations if you get the hear, if you have the petition come before the board in front, with, during the hearing? So at what point do the recommendations come back? And it doesn't change any of the fact that there has to be a 15-day posting for staff recommendations. Period.
I think the fact that council didn't come back with anything regarding timing different than that, no, you can make all the noise you want.
Did they know we were not posting it?
Do they know--
Posted, they review our stuff.
But we posted it on the other occasions. So did they tell us in the other occasions we had to post 15 days prior?
They didn't.
So maybe it's a council issue.
Maybe it is.
But they should have told us 15 days, because we missed that statutory requirement.
Yeah, I would definitely need them to weigh in on this, because they did not tell us that.
So let's move this to the January board meeting, postpone this action. It's better to postpone than violate ed code. And not only that, it would cause some issues likely with OCSCS with the up and down of what we're going to do. So it should all be handled, it should be vetted through council, this should be discussed with them. It states in there 15 days for staff recommendations. It's clear.
I mean, that's clear, on the way that you read it versus the way that an attorney, I mean, we're not, none of us are attorneys, which is why we have council. It says public hearing. It doesn't say anything about--
So maybe this should have been another public hearing, instead of just move to approve.
Two public hearings?
I'm still at the point where how do you have a public hearing when you're just receiving the information? And also provide staff recommendations. You can't. You have to have it first, then you have staff recommendations, then we approve, and then we come back with the MOU. All of these steps are so fast, we're not following the statutory requirements.
So if, how come you didn't bring this up to our council today? Can we have them in the back, get out, please?
You have to give a warning.
Paula Powers?
You have to give a warning.
Can you be quiet for a moment? I will give her her warning. I was about to say Paula Powers, you've been warned.
Great.
Thank you. Paula Powers, please. Thank you. So how come you and Marilyn, if this was discussed at CSBA, which was last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, how come you didn't call David Huff? How come you didn't state his concerns? And then you just sprung it at the board meeting tonight?
I'm not the president of the board, so I am not entitled to communication.
Yes, you are. You call him all the time.
No, I don't.
You and Marilyn called him, yes. He's told me several times--
I have talked to him once or twice. And when you go through and you look at who the communication goes through related to board issues, it goes through the board president or our bylaws.
Right. But Marilyn has made several phone calls as well. Marilyn, did you call David Huff at, from CSBA, or he was at CSBA?
I didn't see him at CSBA.
I was asking Marilyn.
I did not see David Huff at CSBA, and I did not call him. I talked to CSBA attorneys that were there.
Okay.
And also, I didn't know that this was going to be on the agenda until Friday night, when it came to me. No one said that this, I got no forewarning, no telling me what was going to be on the agenda. And that's when I started doing my research. So if you want me to be more prepared--
Then how did you ask at CSBA?
--I suspect I have information ahead of time.
Thank you.
Marilyn, then how did you ask--
What's going to be on the agenda?
Marilyn, Marilyn, can you hear me? Marilyn?
Who's the speaker?
This is Todd.
It's, the mics at the district coming through are very garbled, so it's very hard to understand.
Marilyn, this is Todd. Can you hear me now? Marilyn?
Yes. Who's speaking?
This is Todd. Hi.
Hello, Mr. Frazier.
So my question is, if you just found out about this Friday, how did you ask about it at CSBA?
Because we were there on Saturday as well. The conference goes through Saturday.
Okay, I thought you said Wednesday just now.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Wednesday's the pre-conference.
Got it.
Should we take a break and then Marilyn call in by phone, so it's easier for her to hear?
Yeah, I think so. How is she calling in right now?
That's what Jeremy suggested.
Okay, yeah, we need to do that.
Maybe you suggest it, because your mic is on, and she can't hear his.
Yeah, Marilyn, we're going to take a break, and we're going to be calling by phone, so you can hear us better. Maybe that didn't work. I don't think she can hear that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a five, five-minute break. Okay. Can Marilyn, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the table to push this out. And council just told us that there is nothing that you guys are stating. He says that there's nothing about material revisions. It's only for renewal or for startup of a charter. So there's no evidence of that. He went through all of the statutes. He had his partner on the phone, and they had said all that. So he says, go ahead, you know. It's in his opinion that there's nothing cited whatsoever for material revision. And in fact, the only thing that talks about for material revision is 4605A subsection 4, and it doesn't talk about anything. All it says is that you have to have a public hearing. It doesn't talk about anything posting or what's, whatnot.
I have conflicting comments from other attorneys, so you can go ahead with it, but I'll be bringing this back and requesting other attorneys look at this.
Okay, sounds good. So this vote, the vote is, the vote is to, your vote was to--
Move, we postpone action to the January meeting.
Okay. So the vote is to move the action to the January meeting. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Are you sure you're voting? Aye, okay. All right.
No.
No, and I'm a no. Okay, so it will be pushed to the January meeting.
I move that we also take the memorandum of understanding between PYL and OCSCS off as well, since that will have to come afterward.
I second that.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a moot point if--
I definitely recommend we bring that back with the petition.
Oh, so do we need to vote then, on that?
Or wouldn't it just come back automatically?
I think we just pull it.
Just pull it.
And just, just a quick explanation, guys. The, I wouldn't feel in good conscience if we were to do that. I believe in this charter school. I truly do. But I want to make sure that we do it correctly. I don't want it to get, I don't, I don't want it to get hamstring. But I, I do realize that there are entities out there that wouldn't, that would like to see this fail. I would not want that to happen. And I don't want to start it off in a way in which is going to be against ed code and against the whole reason that we're putting it together. So that's, that's why I did that.
All right, so-- So we don't need to approve the MOU. So we'll just go on to Valencia. Okay, we are going to turn it over to Mr. Gary Stein for the Valencia cafeteria.
Before Mr. Stein starts, we've had challenges with the Valencia kitchen for some time now, given the fact that we have so many students there in such a small serving facility. So what we've been looking at is ways to improve the facility in, in manners that can be both efficient and cost-effective. I'm personally very concerned about a new build there, given the cost of knocking down, down buildings and rebuilding. So what we're looking at is where actually the old kitchen was. There's actually still even a sign on the auditorium, multipurpose room, whatever you call it, multipurpose room, that says kitchen, Valencia Kitchen. So that is where the, the old kitchen was. And so we think that it's more cost-effective. And it, and also, it makes a lot of sense to have it go there. So with that, Mr. Stein?
Thank you. Took a little bit of my thunder. So that's good, though. So, okay, I'll start. Thank you, President Blades, members of the boards, your pretended Dr. Ternus, executive cabinet, staff, and community members. Happy to hear, to be here to talk to you about the Valencia High School cafeteria, or the kitchen. And what I want to say, I want to say thank you to our, to our teams who put in a lot of work to find different options, to, we've met with lots of vendors, to make sure that we are bringing different options forward to the board that are possible, right, that are affordable, but to give you the best options to look at. We will be coming back to you at a later meeting with a decision. So this is just a discussion. We're going to share the options, and then we can, of course, get some guidance at a later meeting. So I wanted to go into just the background a little bit. Valencia High School, for those that didn't know, I didn't know this until we did research, established in 1933. Our graduating class in 1934 was one student. And we had some significant growth through the 90s, and got to a point where we had 2,782 students on Seabed's day in 2016-17. So tremendous growth. During that time, there's been a lot of change in the national school lunch program. I mean, we went, we didn't have the program, then we had the program, and then they changed the nutritional standards. And then when you have the combination of the lowering of nutritional standards and the growth of all of these schools, most school districts in California at the time really closed down or shrunk their kitchen size, because they didn't need it. And we, we did the same. And so what happened is, is that just a few years ago, in 20, I believe, 2022, I can't read that far, 22, 22, 23, we had universal meals. It was passed by the California State Legislature, which basically puts a lot more pressure on kitchens at schools. And so we need to do something quickly about that. And also, at that site, we have lots of students waiting to get lunch. So we want to make sure we're able to, to serve them. Latest enrollment that we have at Valencia High School is 2,410 students. The average number of meals that we serve on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday is 1,253 meals per stu, or meals per day. So that's 52% of students get fed on a daily basis, which is fantastic. It's, it's higher than any other site we have. On the minimum days, it drops considerably, because we only have one lunch. And the facility is not really built to serve that many students. So the kitchen is far too small. And so we've been looking for ways to enhance the facilities, serve more kids, make sure the kids can get through pretty quickly and get their lunch. So for those that have not looked at Google Maps and went through to see where it is, where this kitchen is, when you walk on campus, when you walk through the main gates, you see something that says cafeteria. And the first visit I had to Valencia High School, I said, that is the coolest building I've ever seen. It's, it's, it's a very historic building. And they said, that's not the cafeteria. It's over there. So I'm showing you where it is on the map, and it's kind of drilling in there. So in case, in case you're curious, that's where it is on the campus. As we were going through different options, the first option that we were presented with was taking the, the current kitchen, which again, is not the cafeteria, it's the kitchen right next door, demolishing it and building a bigger facility. And so that was the first option that was recommended to us. As you can see, the, the building would be bigger, right, because we need to serve more kids, we need a bigger kitchen, we need more ability to, to, to have more lines where kids can go through. So it would be located in the same space, but it would take up a much larger footprint on the campus, which right now, we have shade structures and benches and things that would all have to be repositioned. So some of the pros and cons, and I think this shifted over a little bit. So it is a larger kitchen. That would be fantastic. We do need that. We wouldn't really have any impact to any other student spaces on campus, because we would be putting it in the same location, just expanding the footprint. And it would give us, when you start fresh, you have the opportunity to really optimize the space to the best way possible. you have the opportunity to really optimize the space to the best way possible. The cons to this would be, there are impacts to students. We'd have to close off that section of campus, and, and the construction would be much longer. Estimated, I'm saying two-plus, but I'm saying it would be probably three years at least. And then during that time, we would also have reduced student lunch area, which is currently where they're hovering around and eating. And then the cost. So the cost that we have estimated, based on what the architects brought us, is $5.2 million to do a complete demolish and rebuild of a kitchen. So that is option one. Option two really came about when we were looking at, we love that building, and we'd love to reuse it, right? So when we look at the building, we think, hey, if it was the cafeteria at one point, there must have been a kitchen. VHS is a, is a historic site. It's, it's a very old school. That is a historic building. It's a beautiful building, and I'm going to show you what it looked like, or at least the drawings for what it looked like when it was first built. You have a large and connected alumni that go to VHS. Everywhere I go, I run into VHS alumni. And I'm like, I, yes, I do know Valencia High School in Placentia, absolutely. And they're very connected. The reason that we really zoned in on, or really focused on this option is that the community, there's a lot of support in the Placentia community, a lot of support with, with the alumni. We would love to do something with the building to help the kids have more pride in their campus, which I know they have a tremendous amount of pride, but it would, it'd be a feel-good moment, and use what we have rather than trying to build something new. So, and I'm going to show you some design, or schematics and things in a second. But the pros and cons. So pros, we get to take this really neat historic building and revitalize it, make it new, make it beautiful again. And I'll show you what it looks like and, and what we've done over the years and what, how that's going to change. We would love a campus beautification project at Valencia High School, and we would, give us an option to, to have two different serving spaces. One that would be optional, but it would allow us to retain the current kitchen, restructure it so they can serve more kids by having pass-through lanes, but then shift the entire cooking machinery upstairs to the, to the cafeteria where it was before. So it gives us an option to actually serve more kids. And then we have the option with that building to create a new student meeting space. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Far shorter construction timeline. Part of the cons would be that we would be needing to take up, there's a space that's being used by ASB right now, and then it's a workroom right next door. We would be taking that space back. And so that would be one of the cons. We're limited by, with design possibilities because that kitchen was there before. It's not like we want to shift our plumbing and the gas and everything into different places, so we're limited with how we can optimize space. And just any construction is a problem on a school campus. So the estimated cost of this is $2.8 million to do the revitalization. So what I wanted to show you, just some pictures of, of what it is now. So if you're familiar with the campus, this is the current state of that building, that beautiful building. What we've done over the years are, we've covered up windows, we've put in air conditioning units and windows, we have, we've really kind of blocked it off. There's a lot of cool graphics, but the building looks very different than what it did when it was built. This is what it looked like when it was built. Full of windows, lots of natural light coming into the building. There were no AC units. There were no things sticking out of windows. It was a very, it was a beautiful building when it was first built. Due to the fact that we had to convert it to be usable space, and this was prior to AC, then we, you know, now we have, need to have AC, obviously, things changed. What we're proposing is take it back to where it was, is to make this building look like this again, and make the kitchen happen again. So the design of it, if you, so provide us some schematics. This was actually the first design to, where we were going to take over a large portion, larger portion of the building and put storage and things. We're not going to do that anymore. So what you've got are those two spaces on the right. The purple shaded space is where the kitchen was, and then it will be again, and it's actually the same layout that it was when the building was first built. We would be adding some dry storage and freezers underneath, so there's this basement, really neat basement area underneath, that right now we use for like golf carts and other things that are parking in there. We're going to turn that into some storage, which would be great. And then the idea that we had is that that's, that area just outside the kitchen, which right now is being used as a workroom, could be used and transformed into what we're calling maybe a student, student union, or we were just toying with different names. Tiger Court was one that we threw out there, but somewhere where we can basically revitalize that space, make it somewhere kids want to be, make it a little more modern, but, but also allow alumni, maybe we celebrate all of the classes, or as many as want to contribute to put up in that building, so that the kids can go in there, they can see the, the rich history of Valencia High School. So it'd be a really cool thing for that campus, and all that's included in that cost. So that's where, this is a pretty exciting idea. So that's, that's the main building, and then we've got the current kitchen, which we would change it around to remove a lot of the cooking equipment and just have heating stations, and then we'd have a lot more service lines so the kids can really pass through. So we would be able to serve more kids a lot more quickly, and I forgot to mention this, there's also an option to add in a serving line in that kitchen itself. So that's not what we're proposing. Those doors will be closed most of the time so that the kids can use the space, but if needs be, we could. And so it gives us different options there as well. So when we talk about where the funding would come from, what you've got also in here are some proposed spending options and what funds they would come from. And so what you'll see is we, in, we do facilities projects, we use a lot of berated fundings, funding streams, so we use developer fees, we use the redevelopment agency funding, and also some Fund 40 in order to make the projects happen. So either one, they are doable over time, but, but option two, obviously, is my favorite, because I have, you know, 15 slides of that one and like two of the other. But it's, it's, and it's cheaper, which.
I twisted his arm a little bit there.
Yeah.
And it's super cool.
My arm hurts, you know, but, but yes, but it's a, I feel like it's a great opportunity for the school, for the students there. It would be a, it would be quite a boost for that. So wanted to share that, and then I guess engage in discussion and answer any questions.
So before we get into those real quick, just next steps, if we do get direction that, this looks like a good direction to go, the next steps would be to bring back an architect to actually do the designs for it. And then as far as projected costs, you know these are projected. Construction costs can go up significantly. Sometimes they go down, but usually they go up. So the 2.8 is, is what we're, our best estimate at this time. We do generate developer fees each year, so I think it's, it is a good fund to look at, to primarily fund this, the project. But I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, when I, when I saw this come through, I, I'm really excited about that, revitalizing that, because there's such a historical, it's just such a historical campus, and that building is cool. Even the way that cafeteria is written on the outside, like the, the super retro, and I think that's awesome. So, and they've needed this for a long time.
Are we going to have issues using developer fees again, though, with the community?
No, we, we had that cleared with the, with the lawyers last year.
I, I did have one question about the ASB use. Have you talked with Principal Hertzfeld about what that would, what that would do?
Yeah, yeah, he's on board.
He's on board?
Yes. We have, we have space, we can, we can move that, the ASB and.
Okay, we're not, we're not taking away space, we're just changing it.
We would be shifting.
Okay.
I personally love the guy.
My question is about the cost of shifting them. Is, is there space? That building is really large, and are we shifting them into that building, or totally relocating the current students to a new section of the campus?
So we would need to relocate, there's one classroom, there is a work area, and then there is, actually, that's all we would be relocating. So we would need to relocate the classroom to more, most likely portable somewhere. The whole storefront and everything that's, that's all going to stay. So everything to the, that's outside of that big room would stay. We would just need to find a different place for the ASB to, to, for workspace.
They're in a couple of different, they're, they're currently in both sides of that, which is actually pretty large when you look at different ASBs.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's relatively reasonable, as long as we're making sure that we create some space or ensure that they have some space. I, I love the idea of keeping it a historic building. It matches the auditorium. We've got the old elementary school campus or building on there. I think it adds so much character, it would lose a lot. It would just look like one of those other buildings, like, like the, the kitchen, or all the culinary arts we have next to it. It just, it would just kind of vanish in there. So I am a fan of that. Cheaper also is great, and it allows us to maybe have some other creative things that we can include in it because we aren't having to stretch it so far. So I'm interested to see what an architect potentially could bring us and see what it looks like.
And you're okay using developer fees?
Mm-hmm.
And Marilyn, you're okay using developer fees for this?
This is what developer fees are for.
Mm-hmm.
And as an alumni of Valencia High School, I'm very excited about this, and I would personally like to tour and see, when I get back, what this is going to look like and, and see, and see how the rest of the building is going to be utilized, because I'm not sure how the, the preschool's being utilized, if that's going to be incorporated. It's hard to tell from these drawings that are small on my little handout that I got. So I would really love a tour and to see exactly what the vision is.
Happy to.
And thank you, Todd, for bringing up Chris Hertzfeld, because it's important to have the site leader be part of that and understand what's going on, because they can help facilitate the conversations around campus when people are watching all of it happen.
And obviously, we're going to need to, because it's, no matter what we do, we're going to be impacting the kids' lunches for a period of time. And so we need the, the local site leaders to help us with that messaging, that, that something better, something great's coming, and, you know, make sure kids are excited about it, but also they may have to shift how we're getting lunch for a little bit.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. What do we do with, how, how do we do that if we have no kitchen there? Are we just going to be utilizing, you know, a outside food distributor for the time being, and then pick up where we left off once the kitchen is done? Or do the other schools, are they, do they have the ability to cook for them and bring it over?
So that's what we'll be doing. So we'll, the good news is, is that we don't have to shut down the current kitchen, because we, we can start construction of that one without impacting it. It's just that time when we do have to shift to work on the, on the new serving lines, that's when we'll have to, if that was not available, we're going to have to bring the food down and distribute it a different way.
But the, I mean, because I was going to say, it's a timing issue then.
It's timing.
Because if the new kitchen is done, then it's just serving lines.
Yes.
When we are revamping that. So that seems reasonable.
We could strategize that being done in the summer, that particular building.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Maybe.
There's options.
I'm just like, timing-wise, whenever we plan something for the summer, it's always a, it's, it's pretty dicey, because every school district in the world wants everything done in the summer.
Ralph is freaking out right now.
Yes, he is. He's, I can feel him buzzing in my pocket. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next step, we bring back a, a proposal from an architect for the project.
All right. So we're moving into the consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information, advance to schedule meetings, and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. Are there any items tonight that need to be polled? None? All right, then I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck. I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. We'll have to do a roll call vote. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
All right, and I'm an aye. Motion carries 5-0.
Sean, why don't you be the one to.
Make the motion.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the December 10, 2024 Board of Education meeting at?
7:53.
There you go. 19:53.
I'll second.
All right. I need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. All right, we'll see you next Tuesday.